And we are live.
I had to start early, Lucy.
Okay. The December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting of the Montegoal Mayor and Alderman meeting will come to order. The chaplain has not arrived. Is someone willing to say the prayer? All right, then I will. Somebody volunteer? No? Yeah? Okay. Sally, pray. Father, we just thank you for this time together as this meeting at the city meeting, and looking forward to doing business to see how the things work out for the continuing service of the town and other people, and continue to help us to make the decisions that be most useful, and continue to go with us through this season that we're enjoying, and look forward to working together with everyone, and ask you a blessing on our time in our Savior's name. Amen.
Amen.
If you'd like to, the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, and one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just as for all.
If the city recorder will call the rolls, please.
Doran here.
Jessica here.
Here.
Dan.
Here.
Here.
Thank you. You've received the minutes in your packets. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Any discussion, additions, corrections? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Citizens' comments. This is something that I found in reviewing some city documents, that citizens' comments can come at the beginning of the meeting, so if anyone has anything to say about the general conduct or upcoming topics of the meeting, please do so. If there is discussion during the motion, you're entitled to one question with one answer. It's not a debate, it's just for clarification and information. But right now, are there any citizen comments? Yes, Mr. Lay.
Yes, under your administration, what's the policy on the public getting the minutes of the city meeting and planning commission as far as timeline? Will they be posted on the website, or?
Yes, officially, the minutes are approved at the next regularly scheduled meeting. What some organizations have done that I've been associated with is sent out draft minutes on the website so people can see those minutes, understanding that they were drafted and not approved. Otherwise, you'd have to wait till January twenty-ninth to get the approval of these minutes.
But the ones you just approved?
Oh, the ones just approved can now go on the website.
And what will that, under your administration, is that going to be within one week, or before the next meeting, or when are you going to have this done?
Well, I would hope for a week. Generally, once we get going, we need someone to administer the website, and I'll get to the website and Facebook in a minute, but yes, they will be posted soon as possible after we're working.
If there's a hitch in that for whatever reason, the city would make available copies of those for a citizen to review?
Sure, on request, sure.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Waller.
It could be useful to publish the draft minutes and label the draft so you don't have to wait a month, find out what happened in the meeting, if that's possible.
That's exactly right, and I have no problem doing that, as long as, as you say, they're clearly marked draft and we get them out. Part of the issue is getting the website. Some people have made the comments, it may not be a hundred percent user-friendly, there may or may not be issues with the website. We need to straighten those out so that we can put out pertinent information. But thank you for those comments. Okay, so I should go with my communications, that's what they called it, mayor's communications. So, I have been going and attending to meetings with Southeast Tennessee Development about grants and planning commission organizations from here going forward. We are filed for a grant for the next module of the sewer plant. Many of you have heard, I'm sure, that it's a modular type unit, so we can add the next module onto that sewer plant to increase its capacity. So we've been working on grants and all of that with Southeast Tennessee Development. Sunshine Law, I have been discussing, I have been told by an attorney and by AMITAS that the Sunshine Law is for information only. The Alderman and the mayor cannot discuss or make any decisions, and I understand that part. There has to be motions and things done properly through the legislative body. But as far as conversations, I think the law says two or more, which means I'd be talking to myself, so that we'll be sending out information only as we can, as allowed by the Sunshine Law. We can have town hall meetings, you'll be, of course, at Mayor and Alderman meetings, workshops are open to the public, and planning commission meetings are open to the public. So there will be enough venues for you to keep informed and express your opinions. There will be, and we've had controversy about Facebook pages, and did that come from the town, or didn't it? I'm proposing one official website and one official Facebook page for information only. Anyone else wants to do anything else on Facebook, that's up to them. The town will have one official Facebook page, just so you know, so there's no confusion as to who said what and what's coming up in future meetings.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is it going to be the current Facebook page, or is it going to be a new one?
I'd have to work that out. I don't know enough about Facebook, because I'm not on Facebook, but as I understand it, there is a Facebook video page that I'll be working on with IT people, though I don't know, but the community bulletin board, the political page, some of those other pages don't have official status with the town. I would like to thank Doreen Parmley and the utility department personnel for the Main Street decorations that we have, those lights. There's been a lot of pluses and positive comments to that, so.
Yeah, Doreen!
And thank you for that. Even those that visit the town say, oh, that's pretty, oh, that's nice, so there's been a lot of positive comment, and it's important that we continue that. Just so you know, we are closing for the Christmas holiday about noon on the twenty-second of December through the twenty-sixth. We'll open the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, and twenty-ninth, and we close for New Year's the thirtieth. We'll be back in business January second, two thousand twenty-three. Watch your gals. And finally, for my comments, we're trying some audiovisual work. I've asked Alderman Nate Wilson, to my immediate right, to work on the microphone system, and I hope you can all hear us in the back, as well as re-sliding out of the way and using the wall behind us as the screen, and there's a ceiling mount projector that we'll be putting in. So hopefully, that will be better than straining your necks to read a TV monitor off to the side.
Thank you.
So, we're trying, but there's always one more issue to deal with. So thank you for that. All right, now, calendar events. Well, the next meeting will be January twenty-ninth. There may be special call meetings, because it's a long time from now until the end of January. So if business comes up, if planning commission has something, we will have special call meetings. If it fits within the calendar, you have to allow time for notice, and that's, we'll see how notice applies when we pick dates. Okay, reports of committees, Police Department, please, Assistant Chief.
How you guys doing?
Good.
First of all, I'm the Assistant Chief, I go by Will, some of you guys know me, most of you don't. Just going to go over a few things, basically safety, okay, as this holiday, we're going to enjoy times with our family and things of that nature. It is known, and it is typical at this time of the year in the nation, that crime does go up, okay? And most importantly, it's going to be break-ins to homes and break-in to cars. We don't have an issue here, we want to keep it that way, but we're just asking you that if you are, if you have expensive items or things in your car, please hide them in the trunk or take them inside at night, okay? If you have any weapons, please take them inside, because most of the weapons that in the nation that are on the street illegally are from car break-ins, okay? Same thing with your homes, storage buildings, garages, try to keep those locked, okay? I know that we feel safe and we do live in a great community, but with that being said, this time of the year, there are going to be those out there that are, want to do some wrong, or less fortunate, or however you want to phrase it, they're going to want to take your vengeance, okay? So that's a safety thing that we're just asking the public to do, and of course, we are doing more patrolling around the neighborhoods, so a lot of times, you're not going to see us, especially at night, you know, two, three, four o'clock in the morning, hopefully you're going to be sleeping, we're going to be out, okay? The other thing, I don't know if you guys know this, but typically in the afternoons, you've probably seen a greater presence of law enforcement. We're doing what we call saturation, okay? That is not to write tickets, okay? That is to inform people and educate people about the speed limit, because we hear a lot, I don't know what the speed limit is. It's posted, Laurel Lake, it's posted, places like that, it's posted. So it's educated, not writing tickets. Now, we do write tickets, okay? But that's not really what we're out to do. Slow people down, make them aware. The third thing that I want to go over is our school zone, okay? We've really, really been focused on slowing traffic down in our school zone, and we're able to do that now, because we're almost completely fully staffed. With that being said, we now have two officers, almost per shift, which allows one officer, most of the time it's me, you see me Monday through Friday, in the school zone with another officer running radar, okay? It's not necessarily there to write tickets, it's to inform. We have children across the road. We've got cars that literally will fly through there, they don't, they say they don't see the blinking lights. Hey, they're there, you see my lights, but the presence is there, okay? You know, I've got two children, they go to school, so I rely on local law enforcement and school resource officers to take care of children, so that's what we're here to do for your children, okay? But as far as that goes, that's all we really have right now. Just keep in mind, while you're enjoying time with your families, just know that there are people out there that are, they're going to do bad things, okay? We're going to do the best that we can to deter that, but you guys can also help that along, okay?
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
The.
Question. Drug fund, two signatures.
The, and I was going to get to that, thank you. I'm going to agenda there's an item, drug fund, two signatures at Citizens Tri-County Bank. The drug fund is a separate account that is handled only by the police chief for drug enforcement only, and there are all sorts of state regulations that guide that. It's a separate account, we account for it, but we don't spend it. Only the police chief spends that money, and he's answerable to state authorities, whatever reporting systems he does. So we just put it on there that we will be opening a drug fund account and getting the necessary two signatures. I do not sign on that account. It's the city recorder and the police chief, so just so you know what that is. Fire Department, Travis Lawyer, our fire chief, is not here, they're doing training tonight with ladders, and he and the instructor are pretty busy. So you have the reports in your packets, are there any questions on the fire department report?
Are we going to be able to start getting these written reports in our workshop packets so that they can go up to the community to see?
Yes, whenever we can get them, there are constant changes. We're talking about cutoff dates. To prepare for the packet, we may have to end the reporting session, just to pick a date, the twentieth of the month. So it'll be the twentieth to the twentieth, if you say, well, there was a fire the twenty-fifth, is that in that number? No, it couldn't be. So we're just working on better communication to fill in the blanks on that. Parks and Recreation, Parks and Recreation, anything?
Do you want to mention this?
This that we're doing, we're posting a position for Parks and Recreation. It's a temporary, part-time, six-month position that we've been advertising to see who would be interested in running the ball teams, helping with the park, organizing the concession stand, all that goes into the recreation park of our field across the street. So, that's being published. Did you have anything else?
Is the twenty-eighth a month time on that? My disposal is in storage.
I believe April, May, isn't it? Now you. The sign-up turn in January, so. I think so, it's been out for a week or so. Anything else on Parks and Recreation?
Not me.
Okay, thank you. Utility Manager. Yes. Yes, Travis's report?
Camera stuff, doing the camera.
Yes, about the cameras. You're going to come, well, you go ahead and then I'll fill in.
Well, he sent me this email, if y'all, when y'all sign, actually y'all signed an agreement, he told me they're going to try to get started the first week of January. Camera, cleaning, what needs to be cleaned, main lines, they're going to clean, what don't, they just go ahead and camera. He said, everything ready, and they're waiting on getting the contract stuff signed.
Okay. What we're talking about, so you know, John has been doing a tremendous amount of work with our engineer, Travis Wilson, to take the next step in repairing pipe to deal with the INI inflow and infiltration of the assembly and Tracy City. INI, as you know, affects the operation of the sewer plant, and we don't need extra water going into the sewer plant to be treated, et cetera. So, what we're doing is, and there's a proposal that is in their packets of the Alderman, we're going to do a CCTV, which is television in the pipes, the mainline pipes, to see if there's anything broken, whether there are subterranean leaks, and that sort of thing that would affect the inflow and infiltration. Besides that, if the camera can't get through, there are provisions in the contract to clear the pipe a little bit or a lot, and there are two stages. One is a more complex cleaning than initial, but we want to get as much camera work as we can, so we know where the INI problems are. So that's John's report on that. Did he mention the step system?
Did he mention?
Yeah, did he, okay.
No.
Let me just mention the step system briefly. There's something, a property being considered, that a part of it does not have gravity flow for sewer disposal. There's been discussion about grinder pumps and force systems as opposed to gravity flow to the sewer plant. We're working with the developer on that problem, but that's something else that John and Travis Wilson, our engineer, have been involved in. We can only do so much, and the land topography only does so much, so we're working on that as well, and John has been a big part of that. So, otherwise, I think that's about it.
Yeah, I just like color, but we have plenty of water.
Thank you. Does the lake help? Okay. Thank you. Alderman, any questions for John?
No, I was going to ask about the water.
How does, Johnny, how does this, how does the closed-camera TV work interfaced with the flow monitors? Are the flow monitors out now so that we can isolate the INI like we talked about several months ago?
I think they are, yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's already done?
They done the flow test first.
Okay. So do we know the results of that? I think there was a question about how, whether, how much of the INI was coming from Tracy City versus our lines, and how much of the INI was coming from the assembly versus?
Tracy, they really couldn't tell, because you remember we talked about putting a meter in on this side of the lift station up there?
Yeah.
So we really couldn't tell.
So they haven't done that yet?
Yeah, but I don't know if they're going to.
Oh, we can't do it?
Yeah, we can, but we're not getting an agreement with them to do it. Because they, that's their line, from the lift station to the first section, that's traces. From there on, the hook up here, that's out, so the line where it's going to be, there's traces.
Okay.
And the last count I had, their meter up there wasn't working, so I don't know if they're going to have this come up.
So we're responsible from Amen Farm here?
We're responsible from the little houses on the right there, the last little houses. I can't think.
Hickory Creek.
Hickory Creek. You know where them little houses are? Okay, from there, this way, we're responsible, they're responsible.
Well, when we talked to, when Travis talked to us a couple of months ago, they were going to put flow meters, they were trying to, they wanted to make sure that the INI we were seeing was coming from Tracy and not from Hickory Creek or Montegoal Greens or?
That's the reason they talked about putting a meter in the line. See, we went up there and did a drop-down test, that's where you, you take one pump, take readings, only a minute, and you do both pump. Well, what we got was way off from what Tracy was giving, so.
So.
That's the reason the meter come up, that installed in the line on this side.
And, but we have to have an agreement with them to do it?
I don't think so, because that's going to be their line.
So we're currently, they're paying us to treat their wastewater, how are we metering, how are we knowing how much wastewater they're sending us?
What meter they read up there, and then?
Their, their meter that you're saying is not good?
They give them a reading. Yes.
So, do we have a plan to get that straightened out?
Well, the other meter, that meter is coming out installed, you don't have to talk to Travis, see how far you got them.
So Travis is working with their engineer to get it?
If he can. He has trouble doing it.
Is Matt their engineer?
Yep.
Okay. Well, that gets my following question, my follow-up question. Did you get that list of things that I was, that I had sent to Debbie about? Okay, there's one of the things, thank you guys.
I asked her, she was busy, and I told her I was good later, and I'm glad she did too.
Okay, well, one, one of the things that I was hoping to get so that we can report to the community monthly is how many gallons of water we're purchasing from Tracy City every month, and how much of their wastewater we're treating every month, and so I, that's why I was asking.
We haven't got that, Debbie. We haven't got that.
Well, I just want to be able to, to report it so that everybody here can know it, I'd like to have it up on, in a monthly thing. So Debbie put the unaccounted for water loss report in from the state, that was, that was really helpful. But it'd be, I'd like to know how much, how that transaction with Tracy City is working.
Okay. Okay, what all this means in English? Is the town of Montegoal is buying water from Tracy City as needed. The town of Montegoal is treating the sewer, sewage discharge, for the town of Tracy City and billing them, so it's a bookkeeping issue. I have been reviewing the contract, I've been talking to the engineer, I've been talking with John. The contract goes for ten years. It comes up in another two, I believe, and I will be discussing this after more discussion with John and Travis for next month's meeting, but basically, we need to know how much is flowing where, from where, and there seems to be some issue with these gauges and meters that tell us that. The new mayor of Tracy City was installed just this past week, I think it was Tuesday, so I will be in touch with her to see why we can't get access to put a flow meter in so we can see what's happening. And it was a challenge before for any number of reasons, no one's fault, just sometimes coordination could be an issue. So, that's what we're working on, that's what they're talking about, and then we'll get some real figures so we can do some real bookkeeping, because are we charging them enough for water, are they paying enough for sewer, et cetera, et cetera? Whatever the scenario is, we need to do the arithmetic. Yes?
Will the city do the camera work in the assembly?
That's a meeting that is scheduled for Tuesday with the engineer, Assembly's Executive Director Scott Parrish, and myself. If we can do it and work in concert with certain reimbursements, I think that there's a possible plan that Travis Wilson is going to propose. So it should be, because quite frankly, everyone has agreed for the assembly to do it on their own would be very costly and probably never happen, because the labor force is very limited. So to get a contractor to fix things and to get a camera crew to take the pictures would probably never happen on the size of the assembly. So if they can work with the town, reimburse the town for their share, et cetera, et cetera, then we should be able to move forward.
Do we not have a giant one coming out of the assembly?
No, that's part of what we need to do, and that's what the camera will show us.
It's the flow.
We've got, we've got a code sphere going, so where's it done though?
Where they did the flow meter?
Where they did the flow meter, they said. But now we have to find the location with the cameras. Okay, Mr. Lay?
That's the engineer Travis, that they have the cost of treatment for sewage, including the, at the plant, plus the collection cost, as well as the water, what's the cost of town of Montegoal to produce a thousand gallons of water, or?
Honestly, I don't know that yet, but that's a question to be addressed, and we will.
You, your contract with Tracy City was, I think, a dollar sixty-five per thousand a few years ago, and I don't think that's ever changed, and it used to be your sewage cost was about double what water cost was in the gun.
That's what, well, it's like change now.
See, that's it, I don't want to quote the contract, the contract says a dollar forty-five.
Okay, a dollar forty-five, yeah.
That's fine.
And a hundred thousand gallons a day to Montegoal to purchase from Tracy City, that's the limit.
That's the, yes, there's a yearly limit, I think, of, I forgot how many million of gallons. My problem with the contract, I'm not comfortable with the numbers, and I'm not comfortable with the accounting, so those are numbers that we have to look at, and Mr. Travis will be helping us with that.
Well, the mayor of Tracy City can't help you, because Tracy City has their own utility there, except for the town of Tracy City, so.
Right. And that's who the contract is with, the Tracy City Utility Board, or whatever they call themselves. You're absolutely correct. Any other comments about this? This is an important issue, it's going to be a big-ticket item. Lucy?
I wanted to ask, John, in terms of putting the cameras in the pipes, are all the pipe, I mean, what are the pipes? Are they PVC, are they cast iron?
Some PVC, clay.
Clay. So when you have an obstruction in a clay pipe or a cast iron pipe, will, is there, there'll be, will there be replacement with PVC as part of this program?
Not for us, I don't think, no. I mean, the assembly might have to, but the town isn't going to, so.
So when you put the camera in, and there's an obstruction, and the obstruction is because it's a clay pipe that's got roots in it, what's the remedy?
The remedy for it's you're blocking the camera, that's the heavier clearing of the pipe, which is in the proposal.
And if it's a black pipe, do you replace it, or you just?
No, the assembly has to take care of that.
This is just the assembly, I thought we were doing, we're not doing?
Well, since you're in the assembly, I was talking about the assembly, the same thing would apply to Tracy City. We're not, we're happy to share and work on cost to find the problem, but once the problem is found, that entity has to fix it.
Right, no, I understand that, I just didn't, there was no mention about if the obstruction led to the need for replacement, it was just to see if there was obstruction?
Well, you know, if it's obstructed, they have to, you know, it'll be dug up and it'll replace the section of the pipe where that's at.
Okay, and it would be PVC replacement?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, tell me, John, if I'm talking out of school here, but my understanding is that this, a lot of this money is coming out of the first round of American Recovery Act funding, which was non-competitive, everybody got it, but it's giving us information so that the second round of American Recovery Act grant funding is competitive, so we need to have this information, so if we find that there are a bunch of leaking pipes, we need to know that so that we have a competitive grant request for the second round of funding, which is next year, is that right?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
We'll check it out.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving, anything else, Travis?
Yeah, you mentioned adding modules on there to the plant, sewer plant?
Yes.
In time, is Tracy ever gonna have a stopping point where they quit adding to us?
I hope so, but I don't know that.
Well, I mean, there you go, you're building modules and they keep building, building, adding on. We're gonna have to build up at the city's expense.
Well, you're right. And that's it. Now, there are a couple of issues that I'm not comfortable with, why Tracy City pipes are outside the city limits and we had to do that. Uh, what I'm referring to too is Keith and John spent a morning with me, taking me around to some of these areas that we have questions on. And it's research and I've only been here three weeks, so, uh, we're working on that, but yes, I have concern about that. I don't feel we have to do the module in the sewer plant to satisfy another entity. If we do, then I think there has to be a cost associated with it.
Didn't we originally offer to help Tracy City because they couldn't build a great school unless they had sewer system?
I, I don't know the history, but I, I don't know.
Yeah, they had their own sewer plant up there, you know, one time. Right behind the school.
Right, but it could not treat
Yeah.
the capacity that was offered after the school's construction. And that's where we came in.
Exactly.
And the pipeline was to go down the old
Yeah.
river bed and we would connect on and help. And they put it in, uh, uh...
Right, they did.
Yeah, I think the county actually put it in, didn't it? Boo, boo, boo the project.
Yeah.
But it was initially, uh, the school that was requesting to have sewer.
Yeah.
We don't actually treat sewer for the city of Tracy City.
Yeah, you could pick up, we did, it goes all the way from that, goes to the old, uh, shirt back. Goes across there by the, save the lot, cross that road to the old shirt back.
We process everything that Tracy City generates.
Cause they don't have it.
They don't have it at all.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Okay. Yes, Ty?
So I think I understand from the discussion that we, we don't know how much sewage is coming from Tracy City.
Not without an accurate flow meter.
Without the flow meter, do we know how much Tracy City's paying for? Processing, how much processing they're paying for?
We, we, right now, we have to go with the numbers we have, but, uh, we also have to negotiate putting in the inaccurate flow meter if that's the issue.
Yeah, so, so... I'm, I'm just having a hard time with this, but if we, we don't know how much they're sending us, so how do we know how much they're, what, what rate they're paying us on?
It's based on their meter. They have a meter.
They send us reading down every month, send it to Debbie and that's what she has to go through.
Okay, so we just take their word for it, which is okay. I mean, I'm not criticizing that, I'm just, I, I was a little... No, I'm just curious, I'm sorry.
That's fine. Any other questions or comments?
What?
Okay. Thank you. You too. Thank you, John. The street department?
We're trying to finish up on our late pickup deal. You know, of course, this week, the rain, so we're slowing stuff a little. And, uh, as far as our reflectors, we were put down, we're having a hard time getting them. Ordered on September sixteenth or something, ordered a couple hundred and got a hundred and forty, so... And I called Marion County, tried to get something from them, they're having the same problem. So I don't know when, when that will happen. But other than that, I mean, I don't want anything else.
Well, please let, uh, your folks know in your department and you.
Yeah.
You're doing a heck of a job fighting weather and wind and leaves and everything else, so, thank you.
After Christmas lights and all this, you get on the leaves then and it's just a... We're, we're getting them while we can.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda, well, any, I don't have anything from the planning commission. There's, they're spending additional dwelling units. Uh, there'll be a planning commission meeting January third. And that'll be the discussion on all the open items that there are. Uh, Alderman reports? Anyone have any? Doreen?
I do.
Jessica?
Um, I called the Franklin County Solid Waste Department again about our cardboard situation. They are now starting to get the containers back to different convenience centers and they hope within the next two weeks we'll have cardboard containers again.
I, I believe I saw them there today.
Really?
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, I got a couple of cardboard in there.
Yeah, we know, we know. Thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Um, you have, Dan, you have anything? I do not. Lee?
Uh, just letting folks know that I've started looking at streetlights again. Um, and since I sent you that note, Debbie, I noticed more than half of the ones on Main Street are now out. So they, uh, I'll, I'll send you a follow-up, but most of them are out on the Marion County side.
You know, ones that's washing out. Now, here on daylight switches and all those Christmas lights are bright, so bright, but they're cutting them.
Is that what's doing it?
So it's your fault, Doris?
No, that's it.
Yeah, that's right.
So that happened before or?
I don't, I'm just, I'm...
Yeah, cause a couple of them are still, okay.
I'm trusting.
So if you have some that are burned out, let me know. We're also trying to identify ones that, um, were put up and maybe aren't in the city's best interest. And so I've called, I don't know if I've called anybody who's here tonight, either I've and I have spoken about. Um, so, so some of them were gonna be identified and, and I'm gonna be bringing to the, to the, these folks to talk about, okay, is it in our best interest to, to, to pay for some of these lights that are on private property that maybe aren't doing, uh, uh, a function? For some of them were easy, like the, the, there was one near Iowa's driveway that had been broken for a long time and none of us had missed it. So it was an easy one to turn off and get off to pay the town's, um, ticket. Um, we'll, we'll keep working through those. I started this a while ago, but I like to go to bed early and so when the days get longer, I had to stop. Now the days are short enough that I can work on it again.
What were paying for streetlights at the high school or something?
We were paying for a streetlight at the high school, yeah, in Tracy City, but that's, that's turned off now. And I think in this last email I sent to Debbie, I asked that four or five be turned off and another six or eight be repaired.
So, so then were we able to get the softer, warmer lights as replacements rather than the bright whites?
So they're moving to a different lighting type altogether. I think it's a conversation worth hav, worth having with Mike about whether we could do something more systematic, particularly downtown. Um, I, I know that the new lights that they're using have less light trespass, which you've been following the conversation about, the truck stop or anything else. So they do a better job of that. Um, I think a conversation to have is, given this new light technology, do we really need a light on every pole downtown? Because the way these new ones reflect, maybe we could do every other pole. Those lights, those long arm lights are almost twenty dollars a month, which doesn't seem like much, but it does add up over time when there are a lot of them. Um, so that's a conversation I'd like to have. We had a shortened, uh, workshop. I had a pile of stuff I was gonna talk to everybody about it, but, uh, we had a shortened workshop, so we didn't have a chance to get into it.
We'll be scheduling another workshop the beginning of January probably.
I'm sorry?
The clock on Main Street, we got a grease department. That thing's been standing there for about twelve years, it never works.
The clock doesn't work?
Yes.
Mayor?
We'll need to fix that clock. Okay. Uh, under old business is the second reading of ordinance seventeen dash twenty-two, which is the zoning change from R three to C two on Highway forty-one. That's what we had talked about before, is in the vicinity of the armory, the new National Guard armory. Thank you.
This is...
So there has been a first reading?
Yeah.
And a public hearing? Just, so you can move this up now, right, to approve?
I'm like a motion to prefer.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm gonna go.
Motion carries for ordinance seventeen dash twenty-two. Next one under old business is the second reading of ordinance nineteen dash twenty-two, which is the Catherine Street zoning changes. Is there a motion to accept nineteen dash twenty-two?
Again, this is second reading on this, we talked about it, so I'm gonna make a motion to prefer.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Under new business, we have a first reading, which is in your packet of ordinance twenty dash twenty-two, which is the sewer systems. And that says, "An ordinance of the town of Montego, Tennessee, amending Title eighteen, Chapter two, Section eighteen dash two oh seven, relative to step or grinder pump sewer systems." This has been a conversation with myself, our attorney and our engineer Travis Wilson, our attorney being Sam Elliott. So this is the first reading on this sewer system. It discusses what we talked about with that development, septic tanks, grinder pumps, uh, force main, uh, situations to get to the sewer plant. So Alderman, any questions or, well, let's have a motion to accept it on the first reading.
Is this more commercial than it is residential as far as the grinder pumps and stuff?
That's my understanding for this particular ordinance, yes.
And what is this change from current? Is it just giving us the, the total discretion to make the decision?
Well, the discretion, or if it doesn't leak ours, then we can reject it, is how it goes to explain to me on a first reading.
So what does current policy allow? Sorry, I'm, well, current policy.
Current policy on commercial, I'm not aware of any that would talk about septic tanks. Maybe there are some. Uh, there are septic tanks in other areas of the town and they're individual under the county board of health with their fields and septic tanks and that sort of thing. Some places, uh, there are grinder pumps, I understand, but I'm not sure of the locations. So is there a motion to accept it on first reading?
I'll make a motion to do that.
Thank you. Second? Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
All right, for discussion now. So what are the concerns in the discussions? This is something that, uh, our attorney and Travis came up with to really more address the, uh, units behind the McDonald's.
Yeah, I'm just not sure what our current policy is. What is it we're changing?
I don't know if we're changing or adding to.
All right, I'm gonna pull up the Montego code and we'll figure this out.
Okay. The amendment is follows, with deletions noted in the strike-throughs.
Montego zoning ordinance. All right, can somebody read me what that is? It's eighteen...
Chapter two, Section eighteen dash two oh seven.
Okay. There we go. It's this.
Chapter two, Section eighteen dash two oh seven.
Chapter... Chapter two.
Section eighteen dash two oh seven.
Yeah, the question while I'm looking?
Who had a question? Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Is this system-wide or development-specific?
That's a good question. I think since it's in the ordinance, it could probably be system-wide.
Yeah.
What prompted this was that development because of the topography and not gravity flow to the sewer system.
The, the highway development?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm not showing chapter two going past, um, section six, so this must be all new.
Okay. And we can get answers before the second reading and approval.
Okay, yeah, that, that would be, that'd be good to be answered.
And Travis will be back. Part of the Christmas vacation is people are gone. So, uh, we didn't have time to really review it the way we wanted, but we want to get it on the docket to try to accommodate the developer. And that's why we're doing it. Katie?
Will this have a, um, public hearing or is this just a first reading and a second reading?
No, this is the first reading. There will be a public hearing and there'll be a second reading.
I don't think we would need a public. Is there any change in this?
You need a public hearing.
This is the public, this is the public hearing. I don't think we need, it's not the...
No, it's the first reading of an ordinance.
But I mean, we're, we're talking about it now because it's not a, well, I mean, a change, we don't need a public hearing.
Changing an ordinance, you need a public hearing. No, we're not trying to do it.
Well, we're adding to, I will get an answer from the lawyer.
It's only if it's a zoning issue.
They tell me if it's a zoning issue, this puts it in my, if it's a zoning issue, you can do that. I'm sorry?
You can volunteer to have a public hearing.
Well, I'm not opposed to public hearings. I think it gives people a chance to...
Oh, you can if you want to.
Well, I'm leaning towards wanting to unless the lawyer tells me no, for some great reason why not. I, I like a lot of input. I like town hall meetings. I don't mind, um, public hearings. If there are no issues, then fine. If there are issues, I think we need to discuss them. Because this is permanent and effects development. I mean, it's not something that's just in passing.
Yeah, I mean, it...
Are you satisfied?
I just think this is kind of a big deal and there are a lot of grinder pumps and things out there. Maybe not everyone's aware of them, but they're out there and we all need to know what this new ordinance is. And I don't want it to slip by.
No, a very good point. And that's why I like public hearings. And the engineer will be back January third and will work on all of this.
So it, so it looks like that the expense will be the, the property owner's expense, but that the city will need to approve the methodology.
Yeah, I'm...
Yes, to a point. What we had offered during negotiations in the planning commission was that we would have a central point. If they got all of their non-gravity flow to our central point, we would take it from the central point to the sewer plant.
But it, but they'd have to put in...
They have to do all the interior lines and pumps and all of that to get to our central point and maintain.
Okay.
So it now makes sense to me. I'm sorry, I didn't read it carefully enough. Um, deletions noted in strike-throughs and additions noted in bold language. So what this is doing is that it's giving us the sole discretion to make the decision over whether it's a septic tank or whether you have to put in a step or grinder pump.
Yeah.
Many of these are... Before, so the sole option of the town of Montego is the additional language.
Yeah, good.
Many of these are based on the town's inspection, approval, et cetera, standards, all of that.
Right, right.
So it's not opening...
And it's basically based on what Travis Wilson feels is necessary and will take care of the sewage
Exactly.
from this location.
And it's, it's in all these ordinance requiring that the town engineer approve, so this is...
We won't have sewage going off the mountain, that's good.
But it's being compliant with state and federal water regulations.
Right.
Also gives us right of entry. Uh, Dan's disposable wipes. I think those things should be... Um, and it changes the responsibility of the first two years of maintenance from the town and moves it to the developer. So this is... I apologize. I missed that bold-faced line, so now it all makes sense.
Good.
It's hard to read. Can you open that on the website?
Well, somewhere. We'll try. We're working on the website too, so I can guarantee that everything will be done tomorrow.
No, I don't care about tomorrow.
It'll be done with answers before January, uh, right after January third.
I'm sorry, I just came in late. So you now, I think the code right now is that if you have a sewer hookup, you have to hook up to a sewer. You can't have a septic field. Is that changing now? No.
No. This part deals with the topography that the engineer had tried to resolve with the developer because it was not gravity flow. So that's why we're talking about grinder pumps and force systems.
But even if it's not gravity flow, if you have a sewer hookup available, whether you have to install a grinder pump or not, you have to hook to the sewer. You can't have a septic field. That's the way the code read. So is that changing now where?
No, the only thing we added or was talking about at the planning commission is that they get it to a... is that they get it to a central point, which in essence would be our sewer collection point, and send that to the sewer plant. We would pick it up from a central collection point to the sewer plant.
I understand that, but I'm just saying, if there's a sewer hookup available at the property, you, it doesn't matter what the property owner has to do, if he has to put a grinder pump in or anything else, he has to hook up the sewer by whatever means.
Well, and I think this is the means, this is what Travis has worked out.
But yeah, all, all this does is, is puts, it appears to put the decision of whether it's a step system or a grinder pump solely in the hands of the town, and makes it subject to town engineer review.
If we can't have septic, why?
Wait, wait, wait. Dean, you had a point?
Yes, originally when the town of Mont Eagle started the sewer system, we borrowed money from Parkers Home Administration. They required us to pass an ordinance that said if sewage went by your property, you had to pay for it. They didn't say you had to hook on. And there were several customers, and still probably a few to this day, that paid the sewer fee, and they are on a septic tank and fill-in system. Debbie, you may be able to enlighten, but that was the way it was, uh, in, in the late seventies or whenever the sewer plant, but it was, it was a loan requirement, so everyone would, would have to pay the, the cost of that, and that's how it started.
Thank you.
And just two years ago, we requested to have a septic field in. We requested it.
Wait, hold on, please.
Sorry.
Everyone, hold on.
I said this is primarily concerning a huge development that is in the office, it's not a, somebody building a home.
No, I understand, I'm just trying to see how it's gonna be used based on a single unit versus multiple units and/or existing units, that's all.
And we'll get that answer when the engineer returns in early part of January. Because he's the one that came up with it, with a lot of discussion on what they call the step system.
It's a good question.
It's, it seems like it gives us the authority to dictate based on the engineer's recommendations on a site-specific basis, does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you. Lucy, you had a question or no?
No, I just, just confused a little bit about where septic is okay, where it's not permissible, because we're talking about, well, if they have, if you're talking about a step system, which is a septic tank affluent pump, are you allowing septic system in this development? Or are we talking about a waste ejector pump system, not necessarily a septic tank affluent pump?
They were talking about septic tank.
So you would be allowing septic tanks in this particular development?
From what I understand.
Okay.
But I'll get more specific answers, because in case you haven't noticed, I'm not the engineer. Who else had a question? Ty, did you have a question? All right, so we have, wait, wait, yes?
And you say you're allowing septic in the development, this is like a huge commercial and the septic water is valid, it's a sewer most important.
And a, and a collection point, yes, to be determined.
Okay, and then the other thing is, this stuff about the two-year warning, am I to understand, after they do it and it meets the city's engineers' approval, um, that the city will assume maintenance of this going forward, or will the development be responsible for maintenance of it going forward?
My understanding is that there'll be a point where the town takes over maintenance, because we've addressed an easement on the property to get to those, to that situation.
Okay, that's what.
And this is still in discussion, I'm not saying that everyone's agreed, but thank you for clarifying.
Find out what, what we're, what we're discussing.
Thank you.
So the developer pays, the developer maintains for two years, sorry.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Waller, did you have a question? What do you, thank you, go ahead.
So the developer pays under this, and the developer maintains for two years, so it's like a warranty period for their work, and then the town takes it over after that. And I think, just for clarification on your part, this is dealing with an ordinance, this is not dealing specifically with that development.
No, I understand.
But it came up in light of that development, this gives the town and the town's engineer the authority to dictate what goes on.
Okay, so there's, there's a motion on the table?
A second.
For first reading? Just to drive the first.
Sorry, second.
Okay, any further discussion from the Alderman? All those in favor of the first reading, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, first reading is on the floor. Next one is, and you have this in your packet as well, the first reading of twenty-one dash twenty-two, which is a budget amendment concerning employees. Is there a motion to accept the first reading of ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-two?
I'll make such a motion.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Is there a discussion on the motion?
No. I think I have this in my packet.
Ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-two, on the first reading, the motion is on the floor. Okay, no further discussion?
Yeah, I have it, I have it right here. Yeah, I mean, I, I asked about this in the, in the workshop, I, I think that if, my understanding is what we're doing here is we are adding money to the codes enforcement budget line to allow AJ Wade to take over codes enforcement, to allow Travis to be trained and then take over building inspector. And the way this budget amendment is written, we have an increase in specific budget lines associated with salaries for codes department, but we, the, the associated decrease is coming out of our, our general fund balance, rather than coming out of the specific line item where Earl was being paid in the past. And Debbie and I have talked about that, that this is something our CPA is doing, and I just want to go on record to say, I think we, we act as better accountants if we have our money moving from specific accounts rather than into specific accounts out of the un, uh, out of the general fund. I, I understand that in the end, it all worked out because we won't have paid Earl and that, that specific fund item will, should have money left in it that'll go into the general fund, but I think if we're, if we're doing good accounting, we should have additions and subtractions coming out of specified budget line items rather than out of the general fund balance.
Well, as we addressed in the workshop, that will be addressed. Uh, all of these budget amendments are prepared by our CPA firm. You can move money within the general fund as they know by law, we, the water and sewer is a completely separate account and entity. So we're talking about the general fund and the operational side of the town, so we're comfortable that the CPA has done it, if we have questions, we'll address it, and we'll come back with a second reading. Any other questions or discussion on the motion?
I just want to make sure that the water and sewer department doesn't run short if we're hiring three full-time employees out of the water and sewer, and I too, but the general fund needs to be more aligned.
Sounds like it's a conversation we need to have.
And we, exactly, and we will do that. So if there's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Business permits. Do we have anyone here applying for a business permit?
Dean, Dean's there too, and he's the only ones that are in, not standing back, it's, Dean didn't man.
Please proceed.
You've got the application, please proceed.
Okay, then let's talk about the first one.
You gotta go plug it?
No, no, I didn't put it to the go-go plug, it's, uh, the I-24 propane.
Yes, I'm looking at a joint venture with a company that would, uh, want to start a propane business up here, customers, service them with a, a big tank similar to the one like up in front of Bobby Wiggins is on, on the highway up there, and so it's gotta be a storage tank that they would transfer to the delivery trucks, and, uh, I don't want to do a deal with them and then not be able to fulfill that commitment.
Okay.
Where at?
I call it the old Keystone property, uh, the nine-one-one address, I've got, there's six and a half acres out there, I've subdivided it in a manner subdivision, there's like an acre and a half, and then the balance, uh, nine-one-one gave it three nine-one-one addresses, I don't know why, but it's like eight hundred and eight oh eight or something, and eight twenty-four, uh, so, so it has, uh, it has three nine-one-one addresses. Uh, Dixie Lee Avenue.
Okay, so.
And this is the property that's currently is owned in C two?
C three.
C three.
Yeah, and it's my understanding that that's not allowed in the C three. Just for your information.
Yeah, propane tanks are not allowed in C three?
No.
What are they allowed in?
You guys need to look that up.
So we've got one, we've got one right now in the C.
It's never been, it's never been in the right zone, never. And if you want, you don't want to even go down that road. It's a rerun, it's off like all the rest of them. It's, it's my understanding, and you can look it up, that the, the, uh, the propane thing with pro, and you can look up the C three, it may be in there, I'm in the C three out there. So I guess, uh, in my book, you got the little dots on what's allowed in C one, C two, and C three, and I may have missed the C, the propane tanker in, in C three, but I think they're classified as hazardous material.
And that's I one, that's I one.
Well, they're sold, they're sold at Piggly Wiggly and all their.
Well, yeah, but those, it's the size of it that, that determines the hazardous material. People got them in their yard, they've got a five hundred gallon tank in their yard, but that's not, that's not classified as hazardous material, they've got regulations on setbacks from the building and so forth that the company's enforced, but, but this is a major supply tank, uh, very similar to the one that you go by, going to South Pamela.
And they have trucks that will draw from that big tank and deliver to customers.
Yeah, same setup that, that's why we have a propane tank, same, same setup. And, and, and it's, uh, my contention that that is a legitimate business, uh, in the United States of America, and, and you can put it anywhere you deem appropriate, uh, if you want to put it in the C one, or, you know, you're gonna have to decide that, but you, I, I don't think, I mean, I paid, we can look it up, I paid three hundred and forty thousand dollars for a piece of property I want to develop in, with businesses, and, and then, uh, as it stands right now, well, you guys gotta decide, uh, are you gonna vote to get a business license for a business that's not in the proper zone?
Wouldn't that go before the planning commission first to change that zone?
That's, all I know, my position is, I bought property, I want to have a business that's recognized as free enterprise, capitalism, and if you cannot, being in my view personally, but the town of Mont Eagle cannot say, well, we'll work on it in six months or a year, uh, the last thing I went through on the apartment thing, it, it was a year, okay?
Yes.
Uh, and, and I think, uh, I, I don't think legally you can do that, and, and we can try it out and find out.
Well, Alderman, what's your pleasure?
To answer your question, Greg, an error has occurred loading the Mont Eagle zoning map, so. An error occurred loading this layer, so.
Okay, what are we doing?
So it would seem like we need more clarity, so, have you talked to Anya on this zoning issue, or is this your reading of the zoning ordinance?
No, I just read the book, I mean, I just get the book out and go through it and look at uses permitted, and I, I see no need, and they call an Anya and ask her if I can have a propane tank.
So, so you talk about.
I think that's the wrong problem right now.
You, your, talk about the regulation based on the size of the tank is based on what information then?
As far as, it being classified as hazardous material?
Yes.
Uh, in, in, in the past, it's been, uh, with Swatzy Valley Propane on their tank, when I asked them to consider moving, relocating their tank, because at the time, both parties, the town of Mont Eagle and Swatzy Valley, uh, said that is, uh, first off, in the wrong zone, never was in the correct zone, and secondly, it is, was classified at that time as hazardous material.
Because of the size of that tank?
Yes, yes, not because necessarily of what it was holding, but the volume.
Okay, so we need, sounds like we need clarification on what size tank.
I don't know, I just need clarification about business license.
Yeah, I don't know about the size tank, I'm just concerned, why can't he put a propane tank business where?
Well, this is the same property that we, that the motion failed to rezone to industrial on the, at the last meeting, and so.
Right.
I think this is, uh, calling our hand, because we said we weren't gonna really-nearly zone something industrial, and so he's come up with an industrial business, perhaps, but it doesn't sound like we know the.
Well, that's his other benefit too, is the warehouse.
Is this quite next to the hotel, the hotel?
No. No, it's a parcel property, uh, Mr. Nixon owned, uh, used to be the old Keystone Restaurant, uh, Bill Lockhart had a restaurant there at one time, but originally it was built as part of the Keystone truck stop, the motel, uh, the restaurant, Gilt Islands, the shop material, and then it, that, all that property has been subdivided, uh, into about four different parcels, over five parcels, uh, Dan David Oliver had a home, a small parcel in the very back back there that has a couple duplexes on it.
Okay, my question is this, might be interesting, it failed to rezone con, uh, industrial.
Yeah, right.
Propane business is not allowed in C three?
That's my understanding, you get it, but I don't.
Okay, if it's not allowed, how can we give you a business license?
Well, but, but I would answer that question with another question, where can it be?
Because we don't have an industrial zone.
Well, but that's not, if, if, you're, you're gonna have, I think you're gonna have to do one of two things, you're gonna have to allow hazardous materials in an existing zone. I don't think legally, and we can find out, but, but there's case law on it, you, you cannot just say, well, we just won't have, we won't have any propane tanks.
We can't, we can't say we won't have propane?
I don't think you can.
But, but we don't, we don't know that, I mean, Builder Supply currently has a bulk tank that they sell, um, propane in, there's a bulk tank.
They're in C one. I said they're in C one.
Right, so.
I don't know, you guys make a decision, I'm just telling you.
It's a volume.
But we don't, but we don't know what that volume regulation is, that's what Dean was saying, that he thinks there is one, but he doesn't know what it is.
Well, there was one on the bulk storage at that time, and I, I just assumed it was on the quantity, uh, the capacity of the tank.
Well, my, my thought would be that the, the planning commission is charged with understanding and learning about those regulations, about whether or not it's appropriate within a certain district, so it would be our job to say, are we okay with the business, I, uh, assuming it complies with all the other ordinances in the town, and I would say yes, um, but I think there's a separate question here about whether or not it's allowed in that zone, that I don't think we have the answer to, nor are we probably charged in this body with answering it at this point.
So your original industrial request was to include that?
No, no, originally I was gonna do, uh, the shipping containers, and they're not allowed in C three.
But they're allowed in C two.
Yeah, so I can, I can just pile them up down here, so don't worry about that.
I'm not worried, but I'm saying, the fact of the matter is, uh, industrial would allow the propane.
Yes, 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 if you look up industrial uses, it was warehousing, record services, I think maybe even truck stops, uh, uh, the warehouse, propane, hazardous materials, uh, go-go, go-go, uh, what's it say, adult entertainment or something, uh, and, and that was stuck in there purposely when we created the zoning back in eighty-three or whenever it was, I, I'm the one that, that had that put in there.
Right.
Uh, and, and because of where it was, we didn't want the adult entertainment, uh, at the time, we were told they're a legitimate legal business.
Right.
Now, they may do illegal things, but, but they're recognized as a legal entity, and you must accommodate any business, kinda like the liquor store thing, when Mont Eagle first went in the liquor store, they were gonna limit it to one, and, and there was court action on that, and the court ruled that for Mont Eagle, that you can't limit those, and, and this is, there's several towns in, in Tennessee that, that, that went through the same thing. And, and so, uh, and originally, when the zoning was done, and I know it's all changed, but, but C one was downtown, C two was, was out from, from the C one, uh, C two, uh, C one was real. C one was downtown, C two was, was out from, from the C one, uh, C two, uh, C one was real restrictive. C two had certain other things that was, wasn't allowed in C one, and then it had a footnote and said, any uses allowed in C one would be allowed in C two. And, and of course, uh, we used to deal with state planning office, and then when it went to Southeast Tennessee Development District, everything has changed kind of dramatically, uh, I guess due to the time, uh, not necessarily who it was. But anyway, then C three was the catch-all. Uh, C three was gonna be whatever you did want in C one and C two, it went in C three. And now, that has changed, uh, by the planning commission, or Anya, or someone, that C three is, we're gonna beautify C three and, and make it beautiful. And, and so, uh, we have a dilemma. And so you guys get to work that out.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I don't think it matters if, as far as the volume, if it's a big tank or five hundred little tanks, it's still propane. I just don't know how much trouble we're gonna get into by giving you a business license in a C three.
Well, I understand that, I'm not, I'm not saying, I, I, all I'm saying is, I've got, I, I'm, I have a contact that's interested in leasing my property for that use. I cannot sign a contract with them, I mean, it says, it's got to meet local, state.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay, so, why would I sign that agreement?
You can't do it.
Right.
And see, last month, if we had passed this as an industrial, we wouldn't be in this conversation.
Well, that's, I mean, that's, y'all.
Yeah, but it included other things that we didn't want.
Yeah, but, but I asked, at, at the previous administration when it brought up, I said, take that out.
I wasn't there.
I know, but, but, but the record speaks for itself, uh, maybe you can attest to that. Uh, I said, if, if, if that's an issue, take that out of the industrial, and, 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 and I'm great with it. So, so there wasn't out, even though you were unaware of it. And now, the, the flip side of that is, when you take it out of the flat industrial, you're gonna have to put it somewhere else. So you're gonna put it in C one?
Not allowed.
Right.
But we're talking adult entertainment, those won't do.
Yes, I just think, oh, please.
They have, they have to come before us with a business permit. What, even not, I don't care what zone it is.
Well, out there, I don't think it, I don't think, uh, I haven't looked it up, but look up the adult, whatever it's classified as, it, it has to be so many feet away from a residential zone, and across the road where I call the Turner family lives, I don't know who owns that property, but that is residential, uh, on that side of the road. If you go out Dixie Lee on the left, uh, is that, and, and to back up, uh, that, on, on the left side, has been an industrial before, when there was a big, uh, when the zoning was changed, and lo and behold, nobody knows who changed it. But I've got a copy of them out that shows that, uh, as industrial. And, and then, uh, it was changed back to the pre-industrial, uh, zone.
I think it's something we work on.
I think there's so many restrictions there anyway, we're not gonna have to worry about adult entertainment. But wouldn't it be just as simple to go back and suggest that we rezone this back to commercial?
It's already, it's already commercial, it's C three.
I mean, uh, industrial, I'm sorry, industrial. Wouldn't that not be simpler?
You got it right there.
Instead of learning if we're gonna allow this in C three?
But I can do storage facilities in that town. But, but I, I told you from the get-go, if you go out there to look, I, I've said it will not, not look any worse than what's across the street from it.
Exactly.
And I don't understand why we take one parcel of land, if you drive across the bridge and go to the, to the break check station and turn around and come back, that there, there's only one issue with one parcel of property out there, and it's the parcel of property that I own.
I, I would suggest that we look into rezoning this industrial.
Well, the planning commission recommended that, which y'all thought in the best interest of the town of Mont Eagle that you not do that. And, and from the standpoint, why you said you don't, I, I don't disagree with it.
Yeah, the idea was that without a compelling business opportunity, did, did it make sense to just own this industrial? And so this is a compelling business opportunity?
Yeah, we didn't know what his intent was.
Was, was this your intent when you asked to have it rezoned in business?
No, no, but in fairness to Anya, she kept calling me and said, what are you gonna do with that property? I said, it will be something that's listed in light industrial. And, and she says, well, they won't accept that unless you tell me what you're gonna put there. And I said, you cannot require me to tell you what I'm gonna put on a piece of property, as long as it is in uses permitted. And, and I would say the same thing to you guys, that, that I don't think you've ever asked, uh, you, or you cannot make somebody disclose what they're gonna put on a piece of property until such time they do a site plan or business license, or, or whatever it is.
Okay, so if it was okay through the planning commission to possess into an industrial, you can afford the council, council failed. What's the next step to move it back to industrial?
Uh, there's a time limit on that, I think, if something fails, don't you have to wait so long? I don't know, used to be. I don't know.
Tiny days or something.
I don't know.
Would, can I, can I suggest this, why don't you go back to your business partner and, and tell them that, uh, ask them for a contract that you can execute contingent upon, uh, adequate zoning?
Oh, yeah, and there, I'm sure I'd get that done, but, but what I don't wanna get into again, and I will not do, is, like when I started on the apartment issue, uh, oh, well over a year ago, sixteen, eighteen months ago, interest rates would keep, uh, the, the, everything, numbers would work, and, and, and then it took a year, uh, to get that done, and, and actually took about fourteen months, and, and interest rates have, have shot up, and now, uh, the numbers aren't working out, uh, because of, of the rate increase on, on interest. Sometimes the building costs and stuff normally used to would come down enough to offset, and, and, and debt service would, would be pretty close to the same. But as of right now, that's not the case. So I don't want to, uh, sign a contract contingent on that, and then you guys with the planning commission, uh, bog it down and, and just say, we'll just stall it, and, and, and we'll just, uh, uh, you know, it'll die a slow death.
Are you certain that when you remove that from one category, you have to put it somewhere else?
Well, that's what we were told in the eighties, that it had to be included, I don't know, and that's, you know,
Well, let me say this.
You know, if you wanna take the position, you're not gonna allow it in the town of Mont Eagle, I'm fine with that, it's the right head.
Well, that's, and I asked Sam this very question to try to resolve these issues, and Sam said, you can remove it, but it's temporary, the next administration may put it back. But he did not mention we had to put it in another category.
I don't think it was an issue until someone came to apply for a license. Then I think it's an issue that this administration will have to deal with, or any, whoever the administration is, is there when someone makes that request.
So I think at this point, we're dealing with imperfect information. Dean thinks that maybe there's a cutoff on tank size that requires this to be an industrial, but we don't know that for sure, and we don't have the reference, and we're not the planning commission. So, again, I'm gonna make a motion, we approve this business permit, and then we deal with the zoning issues within the planning commission.
But the planning commission had already approved it.
Hmm?
The planning commission had already approved for this to go to industrial.
No, the planning.
You're saying, you're gonna, you're making a motion to approve the business license for the C three.
Hmm.
You're saying you're gonna approve my business license based on current zone?
Yes.
Yes, and that's fine, I mean, and if, if there's a big, big, y'all, I, I think you guys would have to correct any errors and omissions, not me, and then come back and say, uh, you, 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 uh, we, we told you, we gave you bad information, you can't do that.
Well, at the, so I'm, I'm making no warranties in press, expressed or implied. What I'm saying is that at the point where you bring a site plan to the planning commission, then that's the planning commission's job to go, okay, is this correct zoning for this business? And at that point, they may have.
But I don't know the expense of paying to get a site plan done, and bring it to the planning commission and ask them, uh, do y'all like this, is it okay? Uh, that's never been done by any administration that I'm aware of.
With every business that has new construction, they're required to do a site plan.
Yes. But when they do that site plan, they know they're in the proper zone.
And?
And you just said you're given no warranties, that, that this is gonna be in the right zone, so.
So I'm asking you to work with the planning commission to figure out whether you're in the correct zone?
That's something you guys need to do. That's your job.
If there's a planning commission meeting January third, and there is one, is that what, January the sixth? Well, let's check that date first.
It's the third.
The third Monday?
Third.
The first Monday?
Yeah.
It's Tuesday.
It's Tuesday, yeah, city's, I get them mixed up, city's on Sunday.
Last Monday is city, first Tuesday. So there, there may be some zoning issues, and I don't think that we know enough to know that. On the face of it, having propane distribution in the town of Mont Eagle does not seem like a bad thing, and so I'm willing to approve that. But, again, I'm not on the plan season.
You're putting it in C three, Dean is absolutely right. That means if I wanted a propane tank, I could put it in C three.
Well, the, the only problem I've got with that is, is I don't think you make anyone else do a site plan, submit it to the planning commission to see if it's in the correct zone.
No, you talked to Anya, and she tells you, and you said you didn't wanna talk to Anya, so.
Well, I, the reason I don't wanna talk to Anya, really, and I can demonstrate, when I've done minor subdivisions and, and other things, I submit, they send back deficiencies, I correct those deficiencies, and then they send me another correction with, and one of them was the Mountain Goat Trail. I had nothing on there for the Mountain Goat Trail, the Mountain Goat Trail didn't have anything to do with it.
I remember that, I remember that.
And I got those documents, if the rest of you wanna see that, uh, it's a joke, uh, sending something, uh, over, over to Southeast Tennessee Development on, on, uh, on those things.
I remember you saying that.
And then I asked her specifically, I said, is this not like an electrical inspection, where if you have a deficiency, electrical inspection cites the deficiency, you get, you correct it, they come back, that's all they look at is the deficiency. She said, no, we do not do that, my boss said that we can all come back on any resubmission and find anything that we feel like is deficient. And, and, and that really puts people at a disadvantage.
I understand that, and still, she is hired by the town of Mont Eagle to carry out our zoning ordinance. So if you have a question about a business that you would like.
But I, I think the mayor's office needs to do that, 'cause it, it's questionable, uh, it, it's unclear as to whether this will work or not. And I guess, uh, you need to pay your two hundred and fifty dollar an hour city attorney.
If you haven't asked our planner whether this is appropriate in this.
No one asks the planner if the zone is correct, that's not required.
Dean, how much property do you own out there?
Six point two acres in that track.
Okay, but you own most of it out there, right, on that one side, across the.
Well, no, actually, there's about, Dean has, well, cause Dollar has about a three-quarter acre track, I've got six point two acres, uh, the old Cannon property, uh, Dr. Waugh owns that, he's in California. He retired and left and went to California, uh, he's got about two acres. Then there's Tiny Town, which used to be Chuck Rosman, there's about two and a half acres there. Mr. Martin and McMenbroe owned it, he passed about a year ago. Then, uh, the very end, I bought that from Gene Nixon and kept it about two years, sold that to Michael Guteer. So all I have on that side of the road is six point two acres.
Okay, but you're gonna keep developing out there.
Well, we got thirty, thirty-five acres there.
Right.
Uh, commercial, C three, just seems to go across the bridge.
Right.
And then there's about forty acres that join that, it's a residential, and it goes to the lake.
But this property out here where Tiny Town was, all that, you own nine percent of that, so all that is gonna be developed sooner or later. Correct?
Hopefully.
It's all gonna be.
I mean, everything's been pushed that way, kind of with land availability, it's kinda gone, uh, I've been on the, on the west end of town for ten or fifteen years, and, and it's kinda like this property here, uh, originally, you should, no one would come this far, and, and you guys find that hard to believe, I guess, but, everybody turned, what I call the railroad tracks, and it was crazy, nobody came out this way. And, and when, uh, uh, I sold the land to the post office and the bank, and that increased traffic coming farther east, and then City Hall was built, oh, we built the youth center first, and, and, and so over the last forty years, if you look at your traffic count, it's all come this way. And then when, uh, Pilot, well, it was Pilot, uh, whoever the first one that built, uh, Wilco, S., uh, then the Wendy's brought more people, locals, and, and if you go out, you know, just go out and spend, eat lunch at Wendy's, and you'll see a whole lot of local people coming there, well, that was unheard of twenty-five years ago. Well, the next step is you gotta get them across the bridge, and that's, right now, that's a, that's an obstacle. Uh, so, uh, you know, you, you might have another, you might rather have truck stops, uh.
I am all about, okay, in the business license, but I think it's, we as council need to go back and look at that zone, 'cause I feel better it being industrial than C three and allowing the businesses.
I don't have a problem with the town thing, and I'm not, I want it to be done where you will stand behind what your vote is, if you voted down or voted up. Uh, but, but I wouldn't think that you would make a commitment that it be resolved by, at the end of the January meeting, because the facts aren't gonna change.
Excuse me, the January Mayor and Oldman meeting? Which is the end of the month?
Yes.
I certainly go along with that because.
Because it's, it's Christmas time, nobody's gonna do anything right now, I think, nobody's gonna come back to work till fourth, fifth, January, and, and it's, it's, you know, that's just the way it is, everybody's, you know, you, tonight, you announced, you know, the closing, and, and, and nobody works, and, and the study last, well, before last, whenever I came up on the zone into the apartment thing, they said, oh, we, we don't do anything in December. Uh, there's just Christmas parties, and, and then Christmas, and, and that was the, that was the reason they gave.
Well, let me ask you this, how far is your property from the residential area?
Well, across the road, now, now where the tank would be located, and I've got it sub divided, uh, I, I don't know what that footage is, on what I think about the adult thing, so.
Was it a hundred feet or two hundred feet?
I was gonna say two hundred, but I don't know.
You think you're two hundred?
I don't know if that's from, from building or property line, property line.
I think it's property lines or property.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
I don't know, but is it?
Yeah, I've never had any desire, but I've aggravated fear about it, but just, that's just.
Well, my personal feeling, and I wanna research this more, so, it's on the record but off the record. If the attorney says that we can remove certain items from a classification and do not have to put it somewhere else, I don't know why we would not approve this as industrial zone, provided it did not affect the residents in such a way that we have dealt with other issues last time. Because your container boxes are coming, I guess, one day, I see no reason why they can't go over there instead of worrying about this corridor from, quite frankly, as far as I'm concerned.
You're telling me I can put my, I can put my Conexes in the C three?
No, I don't want them there, I want to make this industrial so you can put them in industrial.
Oh, okay, okay.
So that's just my thought, and let's have some discussion, but if we have till the twenty-ninth, and I'm not opposed to calling a special call meeting, I think we owe an answer to Dean on many levels. As a businessman wanting to develop land, but also what are we doing in the future for the town?
Well, before, when, when it was voted down about the C three thing, I, I told the administration then that I had ordered Conexes, and, and they're kinda hard to buy, it's not like going to Walmart, I mean, uh, I, I purchased four, I've got a contract for four more. They delivered two Wednesday, and they're sitting out there, uh, on, on the property. Uh, now I haven't rented them, and, and my position is, which I won't rent them for long, but, but, uh, it's temporary right now, uh, but, but, uh, I'd rather, I don't, I see no reason why I, I should go and, and put thirty or forty Conexes down here on, on, on my property that's zoned legally for that, but it would look like, it would not, it would be better out there, in my opinion, it is down here. But I guess you guys will get to decide that. So I'm legal down here.
But we don't like it down there.
Well, and I understand that.
You never fixed the one with climate control, well, holes in it.
Well, but, but this whole thing boils down, we've got to be, uh, between the planning commission, the city council, and the general public, there's, there's property owner rights, and then there's community rights as to what, what's best for the development of, of the town. And, and, and over the years, sometimes each one has been trampled on by the other. And, and, and it's just kind of a, uh, you know, something has come, you're running out of property to do certain things with.
Which is why zoning is so important. And that's my concern, there's only so much land, that's what you do. Excuse your formative, Marcy?
I just wanted to say, I, you had asked about the propane tanks at a, at the retail store and what have you. Under hazardous and flammable, I'm looking at the zoning, under hazardous and flammable materials, sales and storage, it says propane tanks used in personal gas. and flammable materials, sales and storage, it says propane tanks used in personal gas grills and other such similar home products which are sold or filled at hardware and other retail stores shall not be considered hazardous or flammable materials for the purpose of this ordinance and may be sold at retail establishments in a per zoning district. So that hazardous and flammable is the I, the industrial. So with your question with, you know, Piggly and wherever else that the propane tanks are being sold, it's okay to be in that zone because they're not considered hazardous.
So if you've got 200 of those small tanks, I think it's one of these kinds of.
You'd have to blow up each one of them.
One blow.
All right, well, rather than analyze propane fumes, may we have till January 29th or sooner to resolve this issue with planning and zoning law?
Well, I mean, you guys get to decide that. I would hope you would say January 29th of 2023.
23. Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's.
I think something that.
Not 2035, 2023.
I think something that we need to work on as a council and as a planning commission, we're always wanting time limits put on building permits and all this. We need time limits on us as a council and us as a planning commission that this doesn't get dragged out for six months, eight months.
Well, you've got some of that in planning commission, like on site plans. I think it's the reason they're always saying reject it or whatever. If you take no action on it after so many meetings, I think it's automatically approved. And the intent of that law was for that very reason, but there's sometimes.
Exactly.
And often it depends on what it is and who you are.
Well, a lot of it gets carried on where it doesn't need to be carried on.
But the planning commission works for the city council. They're not a separate entity that can go out and do whatever they want to do. They work for you guys.
They're more an advisory circle.
Yes.
As I understand.
Yes. And certain things have to go before the planning commission for a recommendation. It does not say a approval. It says for a recommendation.
Right, always a recommendation. So if we all agree, we're not denying this business permit at all, we're going to do some research and have a final answer by January 29th, 2023, so that this businessman can move forward with his business. I don't think we need to penalize business as long as it's in the proper location. And no, I don't like it in C1 or C2.
Well, you may not like it out there and that's okay.
But yeah, I think I'd rather it out there than here somewhere.
But Dean did just tell us, he came up with this business because it needed to be in an industrial, because he wanted it zoned industrial. This is not a business that needs a change. This is the zoning coming first and then the business coming after. Right? So I'm sympathetic. However, I'm less concerned about the timelines.
Well, I know your concerns are totally different than mine and I'm fine, but you know, I think you're one of five people.
Yeah.
And, you know, I don't think you have to be a unanimous vote. You didn't use to it.
Majority. Rick?
Can you provide the board the proposed size of the tank?
Uh, not at this time. Right now, it's just preliminary asking about wanting to do a propane business on top of the mountain.
Well, I would ask that that be somewhat defined for your discussions.
The state defines and the state regulates that, who has that. And some of that stuff, you can have no control over if I want to put a 10,000 gallon tank there or a 20,000 gallon tank. I put two 10,000 gallons.
Would that be permitted by the state, what size tank goes where?
Oh, you make application.
You make application, right, but.
But I mean, there's other propane tanks on the mountain.
Yes. Rick, go ahead.
And last, it was voted down at the reading last week because as Nate brought up, if you classify it as an industrial, then it is wide open to any of those businesses. And Dean is saying that he cannot be held to this being the business that it would be put there, that he is, once it goes to industrial, it can be any of those other businesses, which was the reason for your denial last week. So I think you should remember the reason why it was denied and without any specifics from Dean, even as to the propane, I think it's very questionable that that should be reconsidered.
Well, and I agree, but if you go back to what I said, take the adult entertainment thing out of it, it's not an issue.
And that's what I was going to say. I'm going to call the attorney again. And if we don't have to put it somewhere else, I think that'll solve a lot of problems. Because we would take it out and then we could move forward if that's the stumbling block.
Well, and, you know, that's up to you guys. And again, as a property owner, I'm trying to protect my interest as a property owner, develop my property. And right now, I have to go out there, it's like throwing a dart, and I have to make calls and try to find out, you know, what might work out there. There's a whole, there's a whole lot more things that won't work than what will work out there.
Okay.
And I would, whatever you do on this, I would say you need to do that on the other one.
The warehouse.
The warehouse one.
Yes. And that's my point. I'd rather resolve that whole issue of industrial.
Yeah. And so it's not clear whether or not this business needs to be an industrial or whether or not. It's very clear that the warehouse does not need to be an industrial. It could go into C2. So we need more information. The planning commission needs more information to make that determination.
You guys need to deal with them because I don't feel like it's my, and the other thing, I'm partly interested in doing a welding fabrication thing in my building out there. And I don't think he's going to be able to do that, pull that off financially. But to me, that would be a light industry. But I, you know, I haven't even looked that up. He came and talked to me and I told him, I had a couple of people in front of him. And, but he's interested, he lives here in Mont Eagle and said he was wanting to start that business. And so, but I would assume that would be light industrial.
It could also, that might go in C2 as well. Well, we got to look there. But again, that's.
I see that on the monitor. So I think that's down there.
Any other questions or comments? Well, I'm sorry. Is that it for your presentation or request?
Well, I think there's motion tonight.
All right. Are you standing on that motion? Is there a second to the motion?
What was the motion?
For your business permit.
And that was it?
To accept it?
Yes, because on its face, as far as I know, it can go in C2 or C3. I don't have that information. And the planning commission, when the business comes before the planning commission, they can make that determination.
I will be going for the planning commission on, other than the setback, I'm not building anything. I'm not building anything.
The tank's just going to land out of, from outer space?
I'm not going to build it. They're going to pull it in just like it's a building. It's a mobile structure.
How is, how is.
Just like it is there.
Just like it is over towards Valley, right?
Yeah, yeah. Go up towards Valley. Look, it's, yeah. Didn't even have a fence around it. And the requirement now is if you can't stay in it.
Sits on a concrete pad or something.
Yeah, yeah. But it's not considered a permanent structure.
I'm confused because he's saying it's a hazardous.
Material.
Material. Hazardous material can only go in industrial. How are you saying it's going in C2 or C3?
I don't, I'm saying that we're charged tonight to look at the business permit on its face. And he has told us that he's not sure that it goes in C2 or C3. I don't know the answer to that. The planning commission would have to deal with that if it's.
So are you tabling this?
Well, I'm going to withdraw the motion.
Or you're postponing or something?
I'm going to withdraw the motion on the, on the issue.
But if you look in the zoning book on uses permitted, the only place it's allowed is light industrial. It's not allowed in C2 or C3. I'm not, I'm not trying to sell that to you guys.
I understand. Because I looked at the chart. I don't remember every category.
And I don't have to go for that. I do not have, well, for that or even the warehouse thing. I'm using an existing building that's already there. Now, I've got a building permit. I'm doing some renovations to it. And I got a building permit. But that building is already there, which is where the warehouse would be. And so I don't have to come before the planning commission.
I don't know, but I tend to agree with you. Because it's basically a site plan for the propane and fixing a building that you already have.
And I've got two different parcels of the property.
So two different parts. But we'll work on that and get it resolved no later than January of 2023.
Somebody make a motion to that or are you just?
No, I'm just talking to you. Were there any other questions or comments? Okay. So you have withdrawn your motion?
Yes.
Okay. Therefore, do you have any other comments or issues?
Well, what are, this is just an informal agreement that you're stating we're going to do or does the rest of the council sign on to that or?
Well, I think based on all this conversation, if you're signed on to it, I don't know if it needs a motion. Do we need a motion to have this approved as a, on number four, January 29th?
You don't have to.
I'll make a motion.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. I'm going to get an answer.
It would be safe to do that.
Thank you. Therefore, is there a motion to have this resolved on number four, January 29th, 2023?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Can there be any more discussion?
I don't think so.
Okay.
And assign those with the warehouse.
The two business license requests. Okay. So your second is good for that? Okay. Any more discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye. Proposed? No? Thank you.
You know, my connection to the chairman's right.
Yes.
Can we?
Yeah, we have lots of, we have other building permits. I think it's four.
I'll be very brief.
Please.
I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Michelle Storey. I'm a nurse practitioner. And I submitted my business permit application today. So sorry to take it all off guard, but I'd like to open up a medical spa here in Mont Eagle, offering neurotoxin treatments, thermal filler, facials, medical spa services.
And what do you need from us? And I appreciate the introduction for your practice. And what would you like?
A business permit. The plan is to open in the beginning of February. I just submitted today, so I don't completely have my information.
It's here. Okay. We do have.
She would need a conditional business permit.
Use the microphone.
Yeah. She would need a conditional business permit and she would be in Country Mart in Suite D3. And Travis has been, she has spoken to Travis and so has Tim and she, so he, the suite's not quite, it's not completely built out. And so the permit wouldn't be filed until he did his inspection.
Okay, so he needs to communicate this, right?
If it's under construction, would you be having your practice? You just want it as soon as your practice is done. We can do it at the end of January if you think your work is going to be done. Or if need be, you haven't got to post a special call meeting, as I said before.
The plan is to start February 1st.
Right, I understand that.
So I won't be able to have this until then. We did sign our lease agreement, went over our lease agreement today as far as.
Yes. And Travis has looked at it. He told me he couldn't be here tonight, but he was satisfied with the progress being made. And if you're going to open the 21st, I don't see why things wouldn't be approved at the 29th meeting. If that works for you, because you're going to be, work is ongoing. That's certainly allowed.
So does she have to come back for that meeting?
Yeah.
Excuse me, I have to be here in Washington.
She came. She came tonight. I, I.
I'd be happy with Travis's.
Yeah, I'd be happy to approve without her being here again, since she came here once.
You had to drive to get here, right? You're not in Mont Eagle.
That's really not that far. It's a 25 minute drive. He's afraid that I'm here. Yeah, I know. Yeah. I can come back if you want.
Can Katie represent her?
I think we've heard her business. She's introduced herself to us. I think that's the purpose of having that.
Yes.
I'm happy to approve your business license when we have the life and health and safety things approved. I don't think, from my perspective, she doesn't need to have that.
I think I'm hearing, my feeling is that the CEO would cover all of that. It would decide it on January 29th and you'd be good to go February 1st. If that's satisfied you to your landlord and you.
That sounds great to me.
That's fine.
That's right. Thank you. So let's take note of that, that as soon as the CEO is issued, there's no need to prefer the discussion on 29th. I think we can move forward.
And did we confirm, does she need to come back or not?
I don't think so. Like you said, she made her statement and presence. I think we're just waiting for a certificate of license. If there is something new that comes up, I would ask you to reappear. Otherwise, I think you're fine.
Okay.
I'm sorry?
That's happening.
No. Is there anything else, Alderman?
If there's another.
Is Sarah here? Okay. So, motion to adjourn. Is that it?
Yeah. A2 LLC. There's nobody here from that business.
That's, that was me.
Oh, that was someone together. I was looking at them all at once. So Sarah, nobody.
I can talk for Sarah.
If you want to present the situation, sure.
Maybe Sarah will be here next month, but I'll present for Sarah. Sarah Saltbridge is a massage therapist and she is going to be opening at Country Mart in Suite D2. And I don't think she's going to open until probably February 1st. And so I'll tell her to be here next month. But I'm really excited about her. She's fantastic. So.
Thank you.
Sarah Saltbridge.
Okay, if there's nothing else from the Alderman, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Proposed? Thank you.